Do the pledge. I'll leave the pledge tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and honored this land, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay, here we go.
Now, we have David Bearden from the Grand Street Church Christ to lead us in vacation. I want to just say thanks again to the Minister of Life for always coming up here and doing this. Thank you very much. And for your prayers. I had a, one of the members today caught me outside. He said, I hope your ears are burning because we prayed a lot for you today. I appreciate that.
Let's pray. Our Father in heaven, we bow before you, humbly asking that you bless this meeting tonight. We thank you for our past, for example, 125 years of Tarleton University, the great history of this community, the leaders that have gone before us, the sacrifices that have been made to keep it safe and prosperous. We also thank you for our future, for the vision of hope that we have, the vision for a prosperous and safe and healthy community. But in the present, we bow before you and ask for your guidance, that what we decide, what we envision, what we hope for, that our dreams will be your dreams for this community. And may our people be people who hear the honest and hopeful voice of freedom. And we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Mayor, for those of you that did not know, Brother Bearden is an accomplished and a published writer. Read some of his work. He does very well. I want to thank you for that.
Appreciate it. Now, Steve, we're getting to your items today. I just want you to know the chairman will do get this in two and a half minutes. Okay, I just want to make sure you do that. All right, citizen general discussion, do we have anybody like to come address? Your handouts? Okay. Then we'll go on the next item, which is the Consider Approval Resolution Approving a Negotiated Settlement between Atmos City Steering Committee and Atmos Energy Corp Mid-Tex Division Regarding the Company's 2024 Rate and Review Mechanism File. Is that going to be, Jason?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, as you know, we come to you from time to time on these matters. We belong to a steering committee that represents us and approximately 181 other cities as it pertains to rate cases that are filed by Atmos and Encore. This particular one is about Atmos and the negotiated settlement that's in your packet for statewide. The attorneys that represent us and all those other cities have worked with Atmos to reach this settlement for this rate structure and are choosing and asking us to adopt the resolution that's attached tonight.
Questions for Jason. Do I have the attachment? You have said you had a question?
I did. I wanted to ask, I read through this the second time. It's more than a little confusing about all of the different abbreviations and committees and other things that seem to go into this. What, what you're asking for approval for tonight is less than they asked for.
Yes, sir.
But it's not as low as what one of the other organizations recommended for them. But we're not a part of that organization. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Are we bound to follow the recommendation of the one that we are affiliated with?
You are not, but if you choose to do something different, we would be acting alone and would need to hire our own specialized legal counsel to then argue that matter in front of the Public Utilities Commission.
I thought that was the case. We, we fly with the group or we fly solo?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I, I thought that was correct, but I wanted to make sure my memory was right.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion?
Just really a motion that we approve ordinance 2024-R-10.
You have a second?
Second.
Who said?
Brandon.
Brandon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item. Consider approval of administrative service agreement between SITA. I think Jeff, you said you're going to go up in your rates, pay us twice as much?
Four times.
Four times as much. Okay. I know that Jason handled this one.
Yes, sir.
We got that on record. Video and audio.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, the city and SITA have had an administrative services agreement since SITA was first formally created. It was dated back in 2016. Along with their purchase of property that's upcoming, we began talking about insurance and how to facilitate that. And so one of the things that has been updated in this agreement is us facilitating that insurance through what the city currently gets through TML. And then in the original agreement, the administrative fee was mentioned as 5% of their expenses. Jeff and I met, and it's been about $30,000. And we thought with some of the different things upcoming and going into the future, that it would be better to formalize that as a number instead of a percentage. And so we've updated that as well and just put it in as $30,000 for an annual administrative fee. And those are really the, the two main changes in the document in asking for council to consider approving this one that's attached.
Question, Jason. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the administrative services agreement with SITA.
Second. And the motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four times as much, right? Okay. Oh, okay, gotcha. I figured. Okay, item three, consider David Pettit Economic Development Agreement. Jason, I'll turn it over to you again.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, counsel, as y'all know, we've been talking for a while about potential TERES development tax increment reinvestment zone. Further on the northwest side of town, there's a map attached in your packet that shows the exact parcels that we're considering. I've been talking with Mr. Pettit and his staff about whether, as we, as we move forward with this process, if that would be another modification to TERES 1 or the creation of TERES District Number 3. I think we're coming down the side of it would be TERES District Number 3 and be a standalone.
So now they didn't want one D or G or whatever it was.
They, they just think in the long run, that may be better. If council approves the agreement in front of you tonight, then as we formally begin work on that, we'll make that final decision. But I, I think we're coming down on TERES Number 3. We do budget annually in the council's budget for this amount of money for one potential TERES development as we continue to talk about those. And so the funds are available.
Just to approve the contract, approving the development of the TERES.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the proposal from David Pettit on the TERES action.
Second. Have a motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, Steve, two and a half minutes.
I can do it.
Is she here? She's, she already left. I thought we did have a city council being lasted one and a half minutes one time.
One and a half. It's pretty impressive. Pretty impressive. Mayor, counsel, we have just two tonight. First one is applicant Ishmael Cavilo requesting a rezone of property 1125 Alexander. And this is off of Alexander Road. It's 1.38 acres in the Dupuy, John Dupuy survey. In Stevensville, Texas, they are asking for a rezone from R1 to R2 to allow for the construction of duplexes. The property has current feature zoning, a single-family residential. It's, they are requesting to build duplexes, as I indicated. With that acreage, they could fit roughly eight on that lot. However, you have to take in consideration that they would have to accommodate parking, detention, and other improvements such as a street to access all the lots. So reality, that probably dropped down to maybe five duplexes. The Planning and Zoning Commission convened on August 21st, and we received input from four different citizens that sent letters of opposition. And at the meeting, we also had one gentleman show up and speak to the commission. Didn't really express any real adamancy about being against the development, but he did share some concerns. And if you look at your maps in your packet and focus on the water and sewer utility availability, you'll see that this property has water access pretty easily, but getting sewer to it would be much more complicated and actually require an easement across one of their properties on Beach Street. The gentleman that showed up to speak and share some concern actually owns that property. And that was a similar concern that we had about two years ago when this property came before PNZ and city council, and that rezone was also denied because of the concerns with sewer. I don't think the developer is here tonight. Haven't met them personally, but I, I don't recognize or see anyone in here that I, I don't know. So I don't think they're here. But with that, mayor, council, be glad to answer any questions. I guess you probably want to know what the Planning and Zoning Commission voted. It was unanimous vote to deny. We had one PNZ member that actually abstained because he submitted one of the emails of opposition. So with that, be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Steve.
Mr. Killen, the property is currently served by a sand, not a sewer, a septic system and assume a private water well?
That's my assumption. Yes, sir.
But if it were developed, it would have to be connected to city services to do, to follow through with the development?
Yes, sir. If you're within a certain amount of distance, I believe it's 500 feet. I'm pretty certain the ordinance requires you to connect unless there's a variance or waiver granted by the public works department.
To the best of your knowledge, have there been any such agreements or any other accomplishments, not accomplishments, but any other accommodations for those two services for that particular parcel?
No, sir. Not, not for this particular parcel.
Okay. All right. That, that troubles me, not having services available when you start to develop, especially with multifamily units. It troubles me that that's not available.
Yes, sir. Understood. I don't really know the history there, but I'm assuming that property was there before we annexed out into that area or incorporated that area. So they're operating with what they've had up to this point. But with the replat and redevelopment, we would want to certainly try to have them connect to those utilities if possible.
Thank you.
Steve, looking at the land use map and the current zoning, but the land use map, it calls for all of that area to be a single family. Are there any multifamily anywhere around there?
Not to my knowledge. No, sir. This is just short, not a short, it's a short distance outside of, or south of the South Loop on the east side. And so there are single-family homes that surround that parcel. Not aware of any multifamily.
There's a large track adjacent to it.
Yes, sir. But to my knowledge, there are no plans in the immediate future for the development of that track. So this, this is certainly one that, you know, by the term spot zoning, that, that might be applicable here if we tried to do the R2 zoning with the residential surrounding it. However, with our new comprehensive plan, the future land use would allow similar type structures. And so R2 would actually be something that would, would complement housing in that area. But under, under this case, sir, we're, we're asking for a rezone based on the current zoning from R1 to R2.
But you could refile whenever the new comprehensive plan comes in.
Yes, sir.
Other questions?
You said there was a letter of opposition. Were there multiple letters of opposition?
Four letters of opposition. And then, as I mentioned, one person that actually spoke to the commission and shared concerns, but never really stated that he was opposed.
And most of these properties are under occupied properties surrounding it?
Believe so. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, with that said, we're going into a public hearing on case number RZ2024-010. We'll open up to the public. If anybody wants to come speak in opposition of the project? If anybody wants to speak in favor of the project? Hearing now, we'll close the public hearing and consider approval of ordinance rezone that property located at 125 Alexander Road being parcel R17553 at 1.380 acres, A0196 Dupy, Dupy, how do you say that?
Dupuy.
Dupuy. Dupuy. That's right.
Dupuy, John B. And house of the city of Stevensville, Red County, Texas, a single-family R1 to one and two-family residential district R2. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we deny the rezone 2024-0-23, the rezone of 1125 Alexander Road.
Have a motion is second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes for denial. Next item, case number PD 2021001, update.
Yes, sir. Mayor, counsel, Mr. Taylor Canute of Harbin Street LLC, as required by Section 15408 of the zoning ordinance, is presenting an update to the development schedule for the project over on Harbin Drive. I don't see the Canutes here tonight. However, on page 55 is their development timeline. PNZ, at the night of the public hearing, voted unanimously to approve the modified timeline. And as you might have noticed, they are going vertical now and moving along fairly quick on that construction. Still have some public improvements to wrap up, but they are anticipating that they will be moving rather quickly at this point now that they have financing and things in order and their final plat ready to be recorded, which is something that their lending institution's been waiting on. So he shares some information on, on the project and states that they believe that all 50 residential units will be finalized within 18 months with construction. With that, mayor, be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Steve. Hearing now, we'll consider approval ordinance extending the development schedule for planned development PD located on Zero South Harbin Drive, parcel R73763, South Side Edition, Block 19, Lot 15, PT of the city of Stevensville, year Red County, Texas. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion we approve 2024-0-23, 24?
23.
23? I did 23 last time. Ah, 23. Extended development schedule for PD Zero South Harbin Drive.
Second. Have a motion is second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item. Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks, mayor, counsel.
That only took six minutes. Nominations committee, Ms. Smith.
All right. The nominations committee met on August 20th to discuss a few open positions. We had on a few boards and commissions. The first one that I'll talk about first is going to be planning and zoning. That's going to be Bruce Delater. With this position on this commission, you'll have to be interviewed. So if you might step up to the podium for us, please, sir.
I'll be the first one to ask questions.
We put a time clock on Bruce.
Mr. Delater, do you mind stating your address?
1595 Glenwood.
Perfect. And have you served on any boards or commissions of the city before? If so, when and what were they?
Five years. I've served on planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning.
And it ended approximately two years ago.
Okay. And what do you feel like you can bring to the planning and zoning commission at this time?
Well, I have the experience. I have the desire to be involved in the, in the community. I've finally settled. I finally have a home. Wandered the United States basically my entire adult life until I got here. Haven't left. So 50 years ago, this approximate time, end of August, first of September, I came to Texas, went north. So eight years later, I left. And 2008, I came back. And I've been involved in the Stevensville 2050 Plan as much as they allowed me to be involved in it. I'm involved in other community activities as well. I'm a member of the American Legion, and I serve on the executive board at the American Legion. But I like the community. It reminds me of the town I grew up in.
Perfect. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Delater? So he, it was a positive recommendation for us to appoint you to alternate two on the planning and zoning board. So with that, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Mr. Bruce Delater for alternate two on the planning and zoning board.
Second. Motion is second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delater. Thank you for willing to serve. The next one is we had an open position on the electrical board, and we had an applicant of Jared Hancock. And he was unanimously, unanimously approved through the nominations committee to serve on the alternate, or as the electrical, on the electrical board. Does it have a place four on the electrical board? So with that, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Jared Hancock for place four on the electrical board.
Second.
And a motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Jared, welcome to the committee.
The next board that we had opening for was the library board. We had two applicants, Lisa Latush and Mike Jones. With Lisa sitting on planning and zoning, we decided to move forward with Mike Jones unanimously to serve on place three of the library advisory board. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Mike Jones to place three on the library advisory board.
Thank you.
Have a motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
With that, that wraps up nominations.
Thank you, sir. Finance committee, Mr. Baske.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The finance committee met on August 20th, 2024. We considered an interlocal agreement with the city of Middlelothian for purchasing EMS supplies. Middlelothian has let, let us bid for 50 EMS supplies and awarded a multi-year contract. Contract has better discounts than we receive through our cooperative purchasing contract. Chief Isbell, if you'll come up to the podium and give us a little bit of a lowdown on what you're doing here.
Chairman Baske, thank you, mayor, counsel. We're seeking approval of just interlocal agreement for purchasing with Middlelothian. They had let bids and awarded a contract with Bounty. It's a vendor that we use for a lot of our EMS supplies through a cooperative group that we're in. However, their pricing through their contract is substantially lower than we can achieve any, through any other means today. So we would like to take advantage of Middlelothian's contract and go forward with purchasing the supplies through them. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for chief. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the interlocal agreement with the city of Middlelothian for purchasing EMS supplies.
Second.
Have a motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes the finance committee reporting.
Did you say you're taking?
I am. Yes, sir.
Well, I was going to handle the public health and safety committee.
So staffs recommend approval of a grant application for Texas Forest Service grass fire truck. And I'd like Chief Isabelle to, what, give us some of the background on if you would, please.
Just thank you. So we're seeking approval to apply for another Texas Forest Service grass fire truck like the one that we were granted 10 years ago. They will re-grant them on a 10-year periodic basis. So we've just come up with our eligibility to get another one. The one that we have is ours. We get to keep it forever. However, we would like to get a new one. We score fairly better than average in the grant process. And so we would, we would like to put in for the grant. We would know something back sometime in October, whether we were accepted for this round. If we're not accepted, what they do is they roll us into a list that stays active forever until we either ask to be pulled off the list or they give us a truck. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the TIFMS grant program.
Questions for chief.
Chief, this is a full grant. There's no matching funds or anything else required of the city, correct?
Yes, sir. Councilman Nix, it's, it's 100% grant. We assume full ownership and responsibility for upkeep of the truck after we receive it.
Okay. Anybody else?
If we receive this grant, will we have two working grass trucks or will we, or do they have to return the other one?
So, no, we get to keep it forever. So, and we actually have another one besides that. So we would have three.
Okay.
Other questions? Do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the grant application for Texas Forest Service grass fire truck.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes the public health and safety committee.
Monica, her up.
Mayor, counsel, this is the budget review for the period ending July 31st. We're two months away from the end of our fiscal year. Our financial indicators are still about what we expected or a little bit better. We've received $27,000 in property taxes in the month of July. That's a $284,000 increase over the funds collected and through last fiscal year to date. We're at 101% of our budget, and that's about $99,000 more than, than we anticipated. For our sales tax, we received $766,000 in July. That's $205,000 or 3% more than the funds collected last fiscal year to date. We're at 86% of our budget, and that's about $510,000 more than we had anticipated. Of the 39 million revenue spent today, 55, 55, sorry, million revenue received to date, 55% received in the general fund, 26% was received in our water waste water fund, 7% was in our capital projects fund, and 4% was received in our landfill fund. We've received 90% of our budgeted revenues through July. That's about 2.2 million more than anticipated, and that's due to taxes, intergovernmental, and of course, our interest income. We received 900,000 less revenue through July, and that's due to debt proceeds that we received last year that we didn't, well, we didn't issue debt again for some of that this year. Of the 45 million spent today, 46% was expended in our wastewater, water wastewater fund, 40% was expended in the general fund, 5% was expended in our capital projects fund, and 2% was expended in the debt service, storm, and landfill funds. We've expended 58% of our total budget expenditures through July. That's 19 million less than anticipated, and that's due to personnel contractual. The bulk of it is also our capital outlays and then some transfers. We spent 3.4 million less in expenditures through July than last fiscal year to date. The bulk of that really is our capital expenditures. SITA has received an overall 91% of their budgeted revenue through July. That's 26% more than last fiscal year to date, and 87,000 more than anticipated. And of course, there are only two sources, our taxes and interest income. SITA has spent an overall 29% of their budgeted expenditures through July, and that's 267,000 less than the fiscal year to date. That's due to grant disbursements, and 931,000 less than anticipated. That's due to capital outlay, which some of that will be spent in the very near future, and then grant disbursements. Any questions?
Questions for Monica. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Jeff? No, no report. Okay, thank you. You what? No, let's don't. Daryl's telling his head hush. Okay, no more reports. Do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Do you manage it?
No comments tonight, sir.
We am.
Well, I have a lot. We have a busy weekend coming up here in town. Friday, we have the Texas Sports Trail Council. We'll be in town on Thursday to tour Stevensville, lunch at noon on the square, and tour the Walk of Fame. Then we are hosting the TML Region 8 meeting at the Tarleton Texan Club. And the Western Swing Festival starts Friday night at 7:30 with Jody Nix, and the Birth and History of Western Swing film screening at 9:00 PM. Bring your own chair and choice of beverage. Then Saturday, we have coffee, Cars and Coffee, and the Farmers and Artesian Market. Then the Western Swing Festival starts at 2, goes until 10. And then Sunday, we are unveiling the Milton Brown marker on the Cowboy Plaza. And then Sunday, we are unveiling the Milton Brown marker on the Cowboy Plaza downtown. And then there will be more music from, starting at two, and the last performer, Sleep at the Wheel, will start at six-thirty. And then, sorry, one last thing. Then Wednesday, September eleventh, will be at ten A.M. is the nine-eleven memorial ceremony.
Gerald? Ready?
All right. Well, youth basketball sign-ups are now underway down at the park. You can apply online. I'd also like to give a shout out to Charlton State University for the donation of a John Deere mower to our Parks Department, which they are very excited about. And then also, the Stevieville Police Department is now hiring, accepting applications, and you can apply online as well. And that is all.
Thank you.
Very informative. I want to recognize our water department crew. How is Nick here today? No? I came home Friday night, last Friday night, and, and we had some contractors in our neighborhood, and they actually tore up someone, one of my neighbor's water line. Well, I didn't get home till like eight-thirty, eight-forty-five, and, and our, our water crew was out there working. And they didn't leave until the job was done, and, and they got everyone's water turned back on. I was super impressed with them. I know there was Daniel out there, and Tucker, and Lane. I can't remember the rest of the guys' names, but they did a wonderful job. I made sure and told Nick that they did a great job, but I want to go ahead and reiterate the fact that we have great people working for us in all of our departments. And I was really impressed with the work our water department did that day.
Brandon?
No comments.
It's Nix.
Nothing, sir. Want to make two comments. One is today, the celebration at Charlton State University for their one-hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary. There was a big celebration day with several folks speaking. It was a great opportunity for to showcase the largest impact to our economy and Stevieville area as Charlton State University. It was a, it was a fun event. In mentioning that, I just want to mention, I think some of the council knows, if not, at least citizens, you know, we had put in a request to T- Charlton, or to Texas A&amp;M University to be able to use their property for water, our next oil, oil field. So that's we, that's still in the process. The chancellor told me that they're working on it. The next thing is, just FYI, Jeff didn't get to speak tonight. Thank you. But just FYI, there's lots about to happen in Stevieville, Texas, lots. And just, and Jeff says that he'd shoot me if I said what they were. It's going to be, everything from entertainment, entertainment to, okay, never mind. We've got lots coming.
Go ahead, Mayor. I don't think he can hit you.
We have a lot going on in Stevieville, Texas, and there's lots, lots to come before too long. So thank you all for your work, for Steve, for your help, for Nick and his stuff, and Jason particularly, for all his hard work as well. So in compliance with the provisions of the Texas Open Meeting's laws, subject to the government code, Vernon's Texas codes annotated in accordance with section five-five-one dot zero-seven-two, deliberation regarding real property, and section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one consultation with an attorney. And we will be back after the executive session. So don't go anywhere.